We are adding a five point eleven will be discuss and approve support staff in raise. Raise, right? Yes, raise. Raise?
Yep.
Yes. Uh, five point twelve will be hire four K assistant full time. Uh, discuss, uh, yeah, just higher, higher, yes, okay. Any other updates, course or changes?
Nope.
Okay, so, uh, two point two and two point three go together, so if everyone please, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If anybody's wondering, we have one of our board members, David Klinsmann, that is zooming tonight. Okay, so at this time, we do open up for public comments. Um, same speech as always, we do about twenty minutes for public comments, two minutes per speaker. Please don't speak more than two times on the same subject. Be kind and respectful, we're all here for the same reason, and that's our children. So if anybody would like to come forward, I welcome you. I know a group of girls always has something to say. Okay, if we have no public comments, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda items.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I'm doing this. Oh, no, sorry Candy, please come forward.
Thank you. Hello, so I'm Candy Stri. Um, my daughter Danielle is a sophomore this year, and, um, so Monday I got a call from the school, and she came home with a paper, um, from the, the Clark County Health Department that says she's quarantined. She was a close contact, and, um, so I, so I came, kinda, I picked her up, and I said, okay, well, what does it say? And I, she had been under quarantine last year, um, the, the, uh, letter from last year said she was quarantined for ten days, and that if she was, she needs to stay home, she needs to do all, I, do you have a, a letter? Cause I wanna see if, I didn't bring the one that I have, so.
I don't think we have a quarantine letter, no? It's okay, just best recollection Candy.
So, and last year, it had come to where, um, they had said if she was, was seen out of her home, that it would be a five hundred dollar fine. Um, I was concerned about that because we lived in the country, she's walking down the road, nobody around her, how do I? So that kinda set a little bit of an interesting precedent. That did not come on the quarantine letter this year, um, but it did say that, um, which I thought was confusing, cause it said the school is not, this, the school is not allowed to quarantine or remove quarantine, or I, I don't know what the phrase comes through. I have yet to get a call from the Clark County Health Department. I called them twice yesterday to figure out where, where at, because, you know, kids get on their phones, and it's like, okay, well, I've been having these symptoms, you know, this was my date of close contact, you know, she's coming back to school. Danielle's now on day three of fourteen, which means she can't come back until the twenty-seventh. Which is concerning to me because my sophomore daughter is in, is in chemistry, um, chemistry two? Yeah, it's okay, it's with you. And, um, and algebra two, which is a dual, which is a dual credit class, which is a college class. So, you know, um, as a sophomore, there's, you don't have a lot of the skills that you would as a, as a college student to develop. How do you figure things out on your own, how do you learn through this and all? So emailing teachers, it doesn't always work real time, you know, I'm not sure where the cameras are at, if they can Zoom call with the classes, if there is opportunity for mics to be on, can she, I know last year it was a whole different story, cause there were, there, all the kids were doing this. I don't know what the process is now, but it's, for the last three days, we're really not sure what we're doing. Um, she's looking at assignments, she's on Google Classroom, she's doing the best she can, but she's like, I don't get it, and I'm not sure unless I have somebody explaining it to me, whereas, you know, my other child had a little bit different learning style. This one needs to be in, in person, she needs to be able to interact, she needs to ask questions. Um, so to do this for two weeks is really concerning to me, because I really suspect she will not be able to keep up um, with, with either of these two classes, plus she has Spanish, which is a whole other, you know, she's got a very, very intimidating trimester, honestly. Um, so it's, it's concerning to me because my daughter has no symptoms. Um, she's been in close contact with somebody that has been, what she tells me symptomatic for quite some time, and I don't know the details of that. Um, so how can, I look at my daughter, when she calls me up, she says, I'm just overwhelmed, I'm alone, I don't, you know, I can't get an email because the teachers are busy, they're teaching classes all day long, they can't email real time, sometimes they don't even email until later. Um, so if there's a question to go on, or like, look at this website, she clicked on the link, three different links that the teacher provided, none of them will open because the firewall on the laptop. So, I come home each night, and I'm like, how are we gonna do this? How do we, how do we learn when now you're sitting at home, well, not playing sports, not learning, not, you know? Um, so my, that brings me to my next point then, because I do work in healthcare, I have questions for either public health department or, or healthcare in general, is what's the utility of natural immunity? Been through this last year, a lot of the kids we know have tested positive, what are we doing for antibody testing? And could that be something that we could look into? Maybe as research, find out what the public health department is doing, or who they're partnering with to determine, what is the utility of natural immunity? Are we testing for it? Do we have antibody testing for it? Does it make sense to test these kids? And then, do we, so then the follow-up would be, if they have natural immunity, how susceptible are they to being carriers? Because I can see this cycling around, kids that, you know, were in close contacts, they did fine with their quarantine, oh, now they got sick. Now we know they had COVID, they had all the symptoms, whether they were tested or not, you know, now we need to do antibody testing, so, and then now we figure this out, cause I can see this happening for years. I mean, this is not gonna go away, it's not gonna be eradicated. There's a lot we don't know about, um, you know, vaccination and a lot of immunity from that. There's a lot we don't know yet, and for, for the public health of our school, the mental illness of our children, the, not mental illness, but mental health of our kids, we can't keep yanking them, I mean, they just don't know where they're coming or going. So I'm, I'm concerned about the length of quarantine, kids that are healthy or may have had it already, and now they're constantly being quarantined again. Those are the two questions I absolutely have to, I would need to have answered from the public, public health, um, department to know where are we at with this? So.
I had just a couple of questions. Have you contacted public health and had any of these discussions?
I called twice yesterday and left two messages.
Okay.
And then I called today to say, you know, like, okay, what do I do? Because I'm not, you know, she's calling me and saying, did you hear anything, Mom? Did you hear anything, Mom? And I said, no, I haven't, but, you know, it's like everywhere, you can't get ahold of a real person, they just send you through to the automated. I've left two messages on two different people's voicemails, and I called school today to find out if we had heard anything, you know, um, cause I thought maybe if we can squeak through the, you know, the school nurse to get information. So, just trying to find out the best information I can.
I know, I'm just saying for, like, general information, they did post on their website today that they are days behind in their calls, so they kinda put that out there, which we kind of expected, I'm not condoning it in any means.
No, I, and I, I get it, because, you know, trust me.
I know you know.
It's kinda how it goes with just about everything, where you call and say, where are my test results? Hang on, I'll call you. But in that meantime of them being delayed, there sits Danielle, my daughter. Not learning, not being able to.
Past her quarantine to continue, you know, the antibody, you know, you know, learning that I think is important, and, you know, if that's a concern yours, it would be wonderful for you to pursue that. I think, um, from the board, we can say that we do have it on our agenda tonight to review our operational plan, because we do have some options that I think might answer some questions for it.
Okay, just because it's so fresh this week, I wanted to mention our experience, so.
And thank you for coming and sharing those things.
Thank you.
Hey, Dex, is that on Gray on TV? Where is this going?
YouTube.
I'm just getting messages like.
Yeah, it's pushed to the YouTube channel, um, there's a little bit of a disconnect now with our Gray on TV chart, so.
If they go to our website, though, they should be able to link from there. Or just go onto YouTube and type in loyal, and it comes right up. Do we have any other public comments that would like to come forward? Okay, then we will go ahead and move into our consent agenda items. Uh, first order of business will be to approve our August board meeting minutes. Board, any questions, concerns from the review of our August meeting? And we will also do, uh, financial reports, Carrie.
I have nothing on the financial reports, but I do have an update on our expenses for August. Um, some of our bigger expenses were, um, the, uh, fast bridge software re, software replaces were five thousand three hundred thirty-two twenty-four. Um, Osterman Electric, um, was four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine. Um, two thousand one hundred and fifty was for the face room lighting, and then, um, classroom lighting, um, replacing old fixtures with new LED fixtures. Um, school perceptions was our community survey, which was fifteen hundred, which was a pre-arrangement or agreement. Um, audit services was eleven thousand dollars. Uh, Zova, one, Zovalina Masonary was seven thousand three hundred and ninety-five for various summer projects. Um, tech hours to assist at Johnson was six thousand four hundred. We had Marshville Glass, um, for the mirrors for the weight room was two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. New gas ranges for the face room was three thousand three hundred. And then we did social media management contract for like Facebook and Twitter, Twitter was seven thousand. And then I do have a breakdown, if anybody was interested in what the project was for the, the Zovalina Masonry, Masonry, um, what we replaced, if you wanted that, I do have all that, if you wanted everything on that.
Does anybody want that breakdown?
No.
No, good on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that about it?
That was all I had.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, so we can make one motion and one approval to approve our consent agenda items, if I could have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Harlan, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Next we'll move into new business. First up, we have a presentation from our science department, Mr. Zabel and Mr. Menchuski.
Should we come up to the microphone?
Please, please.
I always love a good microphone.
You, if you need to push stuff forward or anything.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Oh, you're not dancing?
No, I don't dance.
Oh, I thought you did more.
There's no, it is kickback thing happening, there was, he would be involved, cause he doesn't know the age. Anyway, so.
These two, I'll just preface it a little bit, so help me in here. These two gentlemen are here, Mr. Menchuski had, uh, talked to me at the beginning of the school year about, um, currently he has standards-based grading for chemistry, uh, his chemistry track. So he would like to move to ke, uh, standard-based grading in his biology track. So I said, hey, I got a great opportunity for you. Um, we're looking for people to come to the board and present, talk about their programs, kinda showcase their programs. So, um, those, these two got together and talked about it, they were more than willing to come tonight, um, and talk a little bit about their programs, um, which also lines into moving, potentially moving the biology to standards-based, that would include AP Biology as well. That's something that we would look at probably to institute if, um, all things go well for the beginning of next year. It's possible we could move AP Biology this year yet, because, um, that class hasn't started, it won't class till, start till try two. That's something that we could talk more with the members of the board, um, after, at a later day to a presentation. But, um, that part of there is something different than what you're looking at, so you don't have to worry about that.
Start with that now.
Um, again, I would like them just to, uh, have them just talk about their programs.
Can I go first?
After you.
So we've had some changes happen for who's teaching what. I'm more the middle school science teacher this year, which is what I really wanted, uh, my background really comes from that. And so I'm teaching sixth through nine, uh, one section of integrated science, and most of it's, uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which I, I like it. I did some summer school back in June, it was kinda a little foreshadowing of, of what I really wanted, and it went really, really, really well. And so part of that is developing a science Olympiad team, so I did Rube Goldberg for the last couple of years, and unfortunately, just on their end, not the students that did amazing job, some of those kids are here right now, but on the end of the people that run it, just some things happened that were, were consistent last three years. I've worked in science Olympiad before, and they did amazing jobs, so. Seven years with that, and it aligns with all the science standards, and kids get to do hands-on, the hands-on skills are there, the, the testing skills are there. So for that change, that's kinda part of what I'm doing, a lot of kids are interested, so that's my update for my end.
Yeah, so I, I love what Mr. Zabel is doing. Um, I feel like Mr. Deekman talks a lot about, as we build a middle school, having an identity for that, and I feel like Mr. Zabel is really taking that on for the science department, and, and what he's doing is really building a lot of passion in our younger students, which is feeding really well into the changes that I'm trying to bring, in that we've developed an AP program in chemistry, physics, and biology now. So we have a lot of college course offerings for our students to really, really achieve more in our school while they're here. Along with that, I'm looking at updating our biology track, uh, grading system to standards-based grading, which I think really aligns better with, really, what are we trying to help our students know? It makes it very clear as I'm, as I'm going through something like atomic structure. We're trying to get them, do you know how to read a photo electron spectroscopy and tell me the electron configuration? No, of course, but my students do. And if they can prove that they do, their grade should reflect that, as their grade ought to be a communication to both me and them that they do in fact learn something from my course. And it should be a communication with people outside the district, like colleges, that when they have an A in chemistry, they are very good at chemistry. And the problem is that traditional grading generally rewards more hard work and just the ability to do busy work that is assigned, rather than have you learned what the subject requires you to learn. And so a standards-based grading system would allow us for that. So I wrote something up, I think it was given?
Yep, yes.
To go in detail on what that actually looks like, and I look forward to any questions or any discussion.
Thank you both for coming and for what you do, you are always amazing. I really appreciate you taking on the new junior high aspect, that's something we, we fully support.
So, so what I'm, what I'm taking from it, and, and I like the way you showed the tables for the difference, um, you know, you know, the traditional grading of the A, B, C, et cetera, and what percentage is, but really, you know, more of a numbering system, and basically that number four would be that you exceed proficiency.
Right.
So you know that, that, that kinda correlates to the A.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, three is proficient, also correlates to the A. Um, two is approaching proficiency, and that could be a range, right?
Right.
It could be a B, B, C, or E.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it, it, and then kinda going on to say, you know, how you would tally those points to determine how a person, is that, if they really are proficient?
Right.
Really have mastered the material, learned the material, or if there's some more work to be done.
Absolutely, and it, and it gives that room above to, to allow to assess students who are really achieving higher than they would normally at that age, without actually hurting anybody for not getting to that level.
I can testify to, like, seeing students deal with, with Mr. Menchuski about the grades and how it's, the standards-based. Students came by, heard him talking, they knew what they needed to work on, they knew what that grade really meant. So I'm in support of the same, the discussions we had, where I've seen students, how they've interacted, it's been really, really good, so, yeah, it's good stuff.
Question? Any other question? Is this your idea?
Mm-hmm.
Where'd you get it from?
Uh, school I worked at before. They were implementing it the year that I student taught there, and it really took off, and it really helped a lot of departments become just really clear. Um, we saw a lot of students suddenly go from not being sure how they were gonna do in a course, or what grade they might get on a test, to going, oh, I, I know this, I'll do fine. Or this is the exact thing I need to study so that I can get a better grade.
Do you know of any school system that this is their overall grading scale?
Uh, yeah, Hortonville High School is completely standards-based. I think, I wanna say Nina High School is as well.
I think it's really cool, I really do, and I think, cause it fits more what I see on the elementary end too, and it's gonna be good to feed up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I really like the fact that, cause it, to me, it's always bothered me, that we look at the tradition scale, that we have ten percentage points, and then all of a sudden an F is from the sixty all the way down to the zero, how does that work? And that's, just, it's always been about, has always bothered me, so I.
Right. Just, they call it the power of the zero?
Yeah.
Yeah, just missing work can take your grade from A to D.
I, I, I like this.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So how do you assess, like, you know, there are certain kids that have anxiety, but like, I don't feel like I know it, but then you can tell them, yeah, I think you're on the right track, I think I know it.
Right, the, the nice thing about it is, it doesn't pre-assume that everyone's gonna get the same assessment. Like, at the end of my test, at the end of my unit, so I always have a unit test, but if a student, just, let's say they totally bomb a section, there's maybe three targets being assessed on that test, and just one of them, they just blank for that day. They can come to me the next day and go, Menchuski, I know this, I know how to do this. And I can go, okay, here's paper, pen, show me. And if they can show me, they, they hit the target, and it's there.
And this requires a lot of individualized work with the kids, then?
Yeah, it does.
Do you have time to do that?
I do, but a lot of how I run my classroom involves helping the students learn how to operate in a study group and learn how to help each other as well. And so I'll find a lot of students, like, we were just preparing for a test in AP Chemistry today, a lot of them are working together ahead of time to go, okay, what do I need to know for this one, or what do I need to know for this one?
That one would require in-person attendance, right? Thank you.
I'll write your trip.
Didn't intend it, just went that way.
So how does this, how does this translate into, um, GPA and things like that?
So it, it does have a fairly clean translation into just the standard A, B, C, D, yeah.
Okay.
Nine E. But basically what happens is, if you hit threes or fours in all learning targets, you have an A. You've demonstrated that I have completely gotten everything I needed throughout this course.
Okay, okay.
If you miss a three, then your dr, your grade would drop down to a B, and then between B and D, it's just an average of your twos and your threes. If a student has a one in any area, which is meant to be basically, you've got nothing out of this. Which I tell students, it's gonna be hard for you to get a one, like, if you have a pulse in my class, you will at least get a two. But if they do for some reason get a one, then their grade drops to an F, and it forces us, me and the student, to come together and figure something out.
How does it correlate then to their, cause if it's an AP class, then they need to take a test, right, to get sort of college credits? How have you seen that applied? Like, you know, when we get the, the fours and fours and fours, and all of a sudden on their, their college test, they get like one credit? You know, like, how do they, yeah?
Well, so far we've only, we've only had the one year of AP, so I don't have much data to go on. I don't really have an answer for you. All right.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, you appreciate it.
Very interesting.
Love it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to five point two, which would be hire a special education teacher aide. Um, we actually are not ready for this, um, I would ask for a motion to table this until next month, if the board agrees.
I'll make that motion.
Kara?
I'll second.
Harlan, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Sorry.
All right, we will revisit our special education teacher aide next. Uh, five point three, we're gonna move on to approve our, uh, policy for the IKA grading systems.
So what we have, our policy committee has recommended that we, um, we remove all our A pluses and go with the four point oh grading scale, which we have been a four point three-three for a number of years. It will be starting with our, our freshmen, where it'll, they'll see the effect of just the four point oh and not the four point three-three. So, um, I think it's something that we've been looking at for a number of years, and I think it's something that is good, that we're changing, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's what I got.
If we could have a motion to approve the new grading system?
I'll make that motion.
Carrie?
I'll second.
Second by Kim, any, uh, questions, concerns from the board?
I'm sorry, when, when does this start, then? Freshmen, like, next?
So incoming freshmen right now.
Okay, right now.
They would be going off with their four point oh. Softmothers, juniors, seniors are still, so that's how we'll work it in.
So the, just so we're clear, the grading system is across the board.
Yeah.
So everyone, nobody will see a four point three-three. It affects the freshmen, because the juniors, sophomores, and seniors will continue to see point three-threes on their transcript, cause they've already earned that, just that freshmen will have, so it, it doesn't compete any, because it's a class, they're not competing cross-class for different things, but, um, just so everyone's clear that it'll be just a four point oh system going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deekman.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have our grading system. Uh, we're gonna move on next to, um, advi, uh, discuss and approve our revised school operational plan, Mr. Bittner.
So, on your board docs, you have what we had last time, and what we've dealt with. Um, what I handed out to you with the yellow highlighting, um, is some of the recommendations we are, as an administration team, is looking at. So we did talk about this, and this was part of our, of our, um, plan last year is, uh, they added on the bottom, if twenty percent of the total staff and student population is quarantined, uh, instruction will switch to virtual home-based learning until that percentage of quarantine falls below that twenty percent, um, staff will still report. So twenty percent is approximately a hundred and twenty students, a hundred, I would say, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty people in our district, okay? Five percent we have still from last, last month. If five percent of the total staff and student population become positive for COVID at any one time, masks will be required for everyone indoors until the percentage infected falls below five percent. So there we are talking about forty, forty, all right. We turn it over. So under daily operational plan, student work areas will be spaced out within the classroom as best as possible. In the two weeks, two and a half weeks that we've been in school, um, you have a minimum of three feet in the classroom, social distance, and that has come into, like I said last month, that, that is gonna be a big factor over the six feet, and it has. I'll talk numbers in just a little bit, but it, our quarantine students have been significantly lower due to this, so. I just wanna review this, students and staff active cases. Positive students will be required to isolate for ten days from the onset of symptoms, and must be symptom-free for twenty-four hours without medication before returning to school or work. Individuals with COVID-related symptoms will need to be sent home. All right, so that is, that is, that would be a positive case, all right? Uh, a student that would be a close contact and would be, or staff, and would require, um, out of school or from the health department, quarantining. Uh, names of individuals identified as close contacts will be communicated to the county health department and, and sent home from school. Duration of the quarantine period will be issued by the county health department. Along with that, with quarantine, we've talked about shortening the quarantine. So we are looking at if, if it's a positive, it's ten days automatic in isolation. If it's a close contact, you would quarantine days zero through five. If you so choose, on day six, you could get a test. If it comes back negative, you may return symptom-free. If you choose not to test, it would be ten-day quarantine, come back, return on day eleven. So tho, those are our recommendations to update, revise our operational plan.
Revise the vaccine.
Oh, also, we, which I've already dealt with this, um, would like to include also. Oh, also, we, which I've already dealt with this, um, would like to include also if they're vaccinated, staff or student would not have to quarantine.
Symptom-free.
Symptom-free.
So.
Vaccinated people.
Just want, just Candy.
Sorry.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, most of you thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, let's make a motion, let's get that on the table, and then let's, uh, discuss. So, um, we just need a motion right now to, um, approve our revised school operational plan.
I'll make that motion.
Carrie?
I'll second.
Tom. Okay, so, um, let's start back at the front. So, so we're saying five percent of our staff population are positive for COVID at any time. We are not shut down. We stay open, but we re-implement masks. Do we change our social distancing from three to six? Is that in there at all?
In the classroom? No. Um, as far as outside the classroom, so transition, um, FIAID, things like that, we, it is six feet. So, and then what you also gotta take into consideration is how long are you with that person? So it's a fifteen-minute max. Um, in passing the halls, it is a max of three minutes, so that's where we are, and we have five passings. So we say they are not with that student those full three minutes, so.
Then under student and staff quarantines, um, we're not changing anything there. We're looking to re-add vaccinated students and staff, um, who are close contacts with no symptoms, who choose to disclose, do not have to quarantine.
Correct.
Okay? And then we're also looking to add that after, if you're a close contact, after day five, on day six, you can get a negative test, produce the results of that test that are proctored, like, um,
Health.
health system. Um, and you can return essentially four days, potentially four days sooner, okay?
Symptom-free.
So those are really the only changes we're looking to make. So we're looking to give earlier return options and options for vaccinated staff and students who choose to share their vaccination status with us.
Yes, and if they choose not to test, we are giving them an opportunity that they still can come back four days earlier.
That answers my questions. What do we have? What other questions, concerns, students?
The test. So, can you get, like, I'm just thinking, when people who've had COVID and they don't test them for a while, and I was under the assumption that they don't test them because they could test positive. So will that show up? Like, will people run the risk of, we give you the option, so I could see this as a parent. I want my kid in school as much as possible, so I have this option of getting a test. But then they go get a test and they don't have symptoms, but now they're positive because maybe they had COVID in the last ninety days. And now I'm stuck with a ten-day isolation because I have this test that shows positive when really it shows positive from, so, I mean, did they, did they have it?
That, that's a risk they're gonna have to take.
Because I'm assuming that you, I'm assuming these are on here because they came from what, like CDC?
It was.
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, CDC.
Through the health.
DJs, yes.
We're trying to.
So what do they say about that?
Erin, is that any information? We asked Erin Shafto, our school nurse, to come, so Erin, if you would wanna come forward and share any information anytime, feel free. You are able to speak during this part as our nurse. Um, my personal opinion is.
Well, I just, I don't care. I just wanna know, like, what, like, what is the deal? Do you run the risk if you get a test?
Maybe.
Your kid had COVID in the last ninety days?
Possibly.
That it could be a positive?
Possibly. Hmm.
They also, they also say if you have asthma, if you have a, a head cold, that can off, throw off the test.
But that's not what we're here to debate, guys. We're here to say.
I get that.
Can we give our students another option to get back into school early? So let's keep our focus.
Now, how many kids have we had positive so far this year?
Two.
Or, or in the building? We have positive cases in the building. What are our numbers?
Threes.
And how many people are quarantined?
Is that right?
Three. Three when school started, three were infected before school started, so.
So three.
So they were, in the middle of their separate, so you're saying like six total, but three were before?
Three were already had, already tested positive before the school year started, but their, their quarantine dates overlapped with some of our school dates.
I gotcha.
So three since school started.
And how many kids did we quarantine, or people did we quarantine out of the three positive cases so far?
I have in, in the, so there's one, I do believe in the elementary. And there is twelve in the high school.
So thirteen. Because those are the numbers I'm gonna be most interested in is positive cases and how many healthy kids we quarantine. Because of those thirteen, any of them positive?
Of close contacts? No.
So this is like kinda the same path as last year?
Mm-hmm.
Where we start sending all these healthy kids home.
Mm-hmm. But now we are offering a sooner return option, which we didn't have before, and we also didn't have the vaccination option before either. So we have to determine, we either want kids in school, so we have to give every, take every option we can, right? Or they just quarantine. I mean, those are truly our options.
What about, what about the districts who aren't quarantined? Healthy kids.
What are you hearing about that in your meetings?
There are. If you're doing that.
Would you come up and talk so people at home can hear? I'm sorry, Erin. I hate to do that too.
I was doing school nurses during COVID.
Um, there are a few districts doing that. The health department highly recommends that we don't do that for obvious reasons of spread. Um, we as a district, we all want to see our kids here. We wanna see our healthy kids here. Um, that's why we're just trying to come up with the best plan we could to try to bring our kids, our healthy kids back sooner. Um, but I, I do, I do believe that giving them that window to see if they are gonna get symptoms is kind of important. Like, so at day six. And the thing too is, we haven't been getting positive tests until some day, sometimes we're on day six of their days before we even hear that it's a positive test. So I might call, I might call Jen and say, hey, you know, your children have been exposed, but they're already on day six, they can be tested today. And they might be able to come back before they're even gone, you know, so.
So is it to the parent to pay for the test?
Um.
Or is the health department gonna pay for it because it's their recommendation?
There are free testing options. Every county has free testing options, and we could certainly give that information and have that available for parents. Um, yeah, I mean, there are.
Do we have like the wait times on any of those?
Some of the local tests, um, through, for example, Walgreens, they are, they're giving results within an hour. Like, within twenty-four hours, but the people that have been getting tested locally are getting emails sent to them within an hour. So that's pretty quick, a pretty quick turnaround time. The clinic is longer because you have to make an appointment, wait for your appointment time, you could be out a few days, just waiting.
Right, now, Marshall Clinic testing is twelve to eighteen hours.
To Candy's point earlier, uh, can people have an antibody test to show positive immune?
I think, I think that would be a really important thing for us to look at. I don't know exactly how we would be able to fit that into, how like, how we could fit that into a school, but I absolutely agree that once you've had COVID and you have the antibodies, you theoretically are perfectly protected from it, just like any other disease that you've already had. Um.
That would be a parent choice.
Right.
Harlem, does, Harlem, does an antibody test last for? Like, let's say, because what if, what if people who, you know, as a mom, I want my kid in school, so I'm pretty sure that my kid had COVID or was exposed to it and has antibodies.
Yeah.
So I can go have him good blood, so I have to test.
Are they saying ninety days? Is that what Candy, do you know?
I'm gonna be a toucher with the, with the body like this.
I.
The last I heard was ninety.
Ninety days is the last I've heard that you, you keep it. Although, like, with anything in your body, once you've had it, you have a memory to that to some extent. It may not be the, the right variant or the right, the right exact virus, but your body does remember for your lifetime, for your immunity, so.
So can that be a free pass, like, uh, like if someone wants to show vaccine status?
Right.
Could it show an antibody status too?
I feel comfortable with that personally.
Well, but we don't have that direction from the CDC or the.
Right.
You know, once.
We don't have that guidance.
Once, no, right, so I think once it's adapted there, we could say as a school, we adopt that.
Yeah, and we, these, these questions were asked at the health department, and they, they're still waiting for recommendations from their people before they can kind of move forward with what's next also. So there's just a lot of questions out there yet, and even the health department doesn't have great answers for us at our weekly meetings.
I'm good at shock.
So.
Do you have anything else you've learned with, um, what we're talking about right now with our operational plan that you'd like to add to any of the changes we wanna make besides?
I, I, I love having the option for parents to be able to test out. I think that that's a great option because I hate to see healthy kids staying home. I think that their education is super important, and we're missing out on a lot of education with COVID. Um, so if, I, I'm in favor of, of bringing healthy kids back if they can prove that they're not contagious to anybody else. To me, that's, um, a really, a really valid thing for their education to be, be able to bring them back sooner. So I.
Five to six days come from, or where?
Well, five to six days is, five to seven days is kind of the window that they have been recommending with the CDC for getting tested. Like, those are the most accurate testing days. You can get tested as early as three days after your exposure, but from day three to day five is not the most accurate timeframe. So those dates kind of come from the health department. Those are the days they recommend after your exposure that you could be tested on.
Because we said, I think, that day two to five is your highest days of showing sim, becoming symptomatic.
So then you would get tested, yeah.
Day five to seven would be your high, your best rate.
Right, and with the Delta variant, people are seeing symptoms as early as two days after their exposures. So it's a little faster with symptoms showing up after an exposure, so.
So and one thing that, I, I agree where we have to have our kids back in here. May, I would say for the main objective of mental health.
Yeah, absolutely. We are seeing that.
They're socially with people their, their age, and they need to be in a school setting.
I have heard that numerous times throughout the high school with the students, that the kids that you're pulling aside and saying, look, I'm really sorry you're being, you know, you were a close contact. Most of them cry when you tell them, like, they're devastated that they have to be gone for two weeks out of school. It's, I think that, that their kid's mental health is a very big factor in this too.
So I think this is a step, at least towards a better situation. Um, I, like I said last month, I think the three, the three-foot distance in the classroom has helped immensely. And I think, uh, our parents have done a, a very good job of alerting us when there's a positive in the family that we know right away, and then we can at least.
Start the process.
Start the process.
Because the health department is so.
And we, you know, we kind of said on here that, you know, we would not be quarantining. I think we tried to, to get into that last year, and it did a lot of public health against the school.
Mm-hmm.
So we kinda said we were out of that this year. Uh, Chris and I had a discussion today because of how far behind, um, the health department is, you know? Is that something we would wanna adopt and change that we, and especially now that we have a school nurse? Is that something we want to become more a part of? Is that quarantine process so it's hitting, you know, those people are getting the calls faster? So they can start that process, they know where they're at.
And essentially, we are already doing that because we have to call for them to pick up their child, so we are that first call. We're saying, look, this is, they've been exposed, your child's a close contact, here's your tentative dates, and we fill out a form that gives tentative dates. But the health department is the one that officially goes back and gives like the official dates for everything.
So what if they don't hear from the health, like with Candy said.
That's, that's been happening.
So where, where do we stand then? So when day comes ten, then are you saying, come on back?
If they're, yeah, the, if they don't hear from the health department, they can come back on the tentative day we give them.
So I guess my question is, if we're revising our operational plan, I guess we don't have to do it today, we can do it next month. But I mean, our verbiage in here is that we are not advising on quarantine. Do we wanna rethink that and say?
Is that in the last one, or is, is that an addition? I don't remember.
No, it, it was in the last one because we had kind of decided collectively, like, we don't wanna do that whole back and forth this year.
And that's kind of what the, the position of the county schools have been, is, you know, we're not gonna quarantine. But now they're running into parents saying, well, I never got a phone call from the thing, from the county, so my kid isn't quarantining, and we want him back at the school.
So we will release names of close contacts if they call us and when they call us, but then we said duration of quarantine period will be issued by the county health department. Do we, and I don't even know if you have the capacity, and like I said, we don't have to do this tonight. Um, do we wanna just monitor this, or is that something we want to say, we, no, we need to be involved in this because of the lack of communication from the health department?
I would say we sit and monitor it. Right now, I know we don't quarantine, but we tell the, the students that they can't come to school. That's not quarantining them, that they're just, they can't come because, because they could be contagious. So, so what I mean by that is, we're not saying you have to be at home and you can't go anywhere else. That's not our job.
We're just saying you can't be in school. That's what my letter says. It says, stay home. No outings, sorry.
Okay.
But that, and yet, a call from the health department, I have received one, but I've received a letter that says, thought of county health department with all the instructions. We shouldn't go back. So I.
All right. Uh, we'll take that into consideration, Candy, okay? Look at it.
I just have one comment or question is, you know, we, we certainly don't want students to feel frustrated if they're not getting their assignments done or keeping up. Um, is there more that we can do to reach out to those students on, on a daily basis if necessary to just check in to see how, how they're doing, um, if they, if they're needing, you know, if they're, if technology isn't working, or if, um, if they need some help, you know, in certain classes. I guess that's what I would just say, let's, let's find a way to help those students who are, are home, um, because of being close contact or who are at quarantine, um.
I think that's easier to do on the middle school, high school, and especially because they can log in the classroom and stuff. I know it's extremely difficult, especially with, you know, our, our really young students. Um, but I know they do like paper packets and stuff like that. But yeah, I, I would really like, I don't know, I wanna think of like a hotline, or can they call for help, or teachers, if they have virtual students, they have to be a daily contact. I mean, I know that so much on our teachers. And I hate to ask that of them, but we have to make sure these kids are getting what they deserve to.
Yeah, but if the student's struggling with her AP classes, I mean,
Yeah.
that's gonna be hard.
I couldn't help my child.
I couldn't help.
So I know that, uh, we talked about this before, but you know, this, this issue is different if we choose to, uh, send healthy kids home. And I know that, I got voted down the last meeting, that's fine, but like, there are districts who are not quarantining, not automatically quarantining, close contacts. And it can be done. Yes, the health department frowns on it. Of course they do. They should, it's their job. But I look at this like, every kid counts. I think every day counts. I mean, I know what, I know what this is trying to do. It's trying to make this better. So a, a six-day quarantine's better than a ten. But that's like saying like, well, a D is better than an F. Like, we still have kids missing days of school who are healthy. And I would feel differently about this if we could show that, you know, the kids that we sent home for quarantine, they're getting sick. We're obviously transmitting COVID at school. But last year, all of last year showed us that that wasn't the case. We quarantined hundreds of cases, and those kids didn't test positive. And they weren't symptomatic. I mean, we can argue all day long about the intrinsic things about this, like, well, maybe they were asymptomatic, or, but we, we clean things better than ever. Uh, we're washing hands, we're doing more hand sanitizer. We have natural immunity in our community more than what we'll ever know or understand. So I'm gonna come back to the same question. Do we really have to? Do we feel that we really, and, and I'm also not crazy about putting the fate of our kids in the county health department, who doesn't even have time to call people back? I mean, that's, that's just the nature of what we're in, right? They're doing, they're trying to do their best job possible. I get that. But I don't like this idea of passing the buck and saying, oh, I don't want anything to do with quarantine. I want the health department to do that. Because they can't even call people back. When we have the ability to do it, and we have the ability to say, I don't think we should quarantine close contacts because if we could show numbers, I'm for it. If it looked like we were spreading COVID at school and we had to quarantine healthy kids because they are getting sick, fine. But we haven't seen it yet. So in my book, every, every kid counts, but every day counts.
Have you ever considered or thought of the other side that by quarantining those kids, sending them home, getting them out of the, that immediate environment they were exposed to is what kept our numbers down? They didn't get sick because they didn't stay in that exposed classroom. Have you ever considered that those?
Well, if they got COVID at school, they would've gone home and had COVID.
We, we lessened the exposure by sending them home. So if they would have stayed here, could we, you know, would I, you understand what I'm saying?
No.
So they're here, and there's a, there's a positive student.
So they're here and there's a, there's a positive student. We sent home all those close contacts. So like you said, yeah, we can, we can, you know, play around with this. Okay, only Johnny, you know, got it. But we sent home all four of those others. They stayed symptomatic, you know, asymptomatic. They didn't spread to anyone else either. Okay?
Well, it's assuming that they need summer asymptomatic.
And now because we quarantined them, now the whole classroom isn't quarantined. We still kept those kids in school. So have you ever considered the other side of the sword of what we were doing may have been working? And that's why we were the only school district in our immediate area who stayed open five days a week. Have you, like, is that?
I don't see it like that.
Okay. I see, I, I, I want to believe, I want to believe that what we did worked.
I, I'm not going back and saying like what we did was super wrong. I'm saying, I'm looking at this going, I don't want to be on the same track. And now we have thirteen kids that have been quarantined out of three positive cases. And that does not excite me.
Is anyone on the board, um, you know, besides Kim?
And we can change our mind. So let's say, let's say that.
No. No.
I mean, prove, prove me wrong if I'm wrong. That we have a couple more positive cases, we give the optional quarantine because if a parent or someone is concerned, you can, you can pull your kid.
Mm-hmm.
It's fine. We have a couple more positive cases and we don't quarantine and we don't have anybody else, you know? I, I look at it that way too. We haven't tried it the other way.
I do always think in the back of my mind about the, the staff, the students and the families, that if we don't do anything, they will leave. They will pull their children. And now what about those kids? Now they're not here.
So that's where I was gonna come in and say, you have staff members that are, and you have students that are, that are.
But la- but last year we had more of that, but then everyone had an opportunity to be vaccinated.
Correct.
And you can still wear a mask if you want to wear a mask.
But that still doesn't eliminate them possibly getting it and spreading it.
Right.
And I think that's where the fear is coming from. Um, and, and just, you know, I talked about parents, you know, kudos to them for reaching out to us and before things are getting out of hand. And we also talk about parents holding their kids home when they are sick. Um, in the last two weeks has been a big issue. We've had a lot of sickness for whatever it is. Um, but kids hacking and things like that in class and we need to get them, we tell them, you need to go home. And, and we, I'm just telling parents, if they're sick, please keep them home, whether it's spreading COVID or flu or whatever. All right? Just keep them at home to keep the rest of us healthy at least. So. I think it's a step. I think it's a step in the right direction and I think we play it or look at it every month. All right? There are some districts that are, no quarantine. No quarantine, but they are testing every day and they are masking those students and they have to social distance as best they can. So.
Erin, what is your feeling on testing in school every day?
I'm not opposed to testing in school. I think um, sometimes it might be hard for a parent to get, you know, to take off of work to go take their kid to get tested.
No, we would test here in school. There's.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I think that that's a valid option. Um, because I think that's, that for a parent to have to take off of work to come pick up their child to go have them tested is a half a day ordeal, no matter how you do it.
Every day testing?
No, like if a child is a close contact and if the parent wants to have them tested, like that, that could be an option here. I'm not, I, we could easily do that. There are tests that are rapid, they have been within minutes or there's, or there's, you could get a carrier to take them to the clinic.
There are the nasal peripheral swabs, which are the PCR test.
Yeah.
And that's the nasal swabs, which you can get, you can say Walmart from Walgreens.
So what I was talking about is it would be the close contact student that would, or person that would be tested every day until whatever, day six or ten or, or whatever. To make sure that they are good.
Are they attending school that whole time?
Yes. If they have any symptoms, the test comes back positive, then they're, yes.
No, here's symptoms are from the school.
So I, I do know uh, super at one of these schools, so I will kind of keep tabs on how that works for.
What about the mental health, like all of these options, right? Like, remember freaking people out now every day, if you were a close contact, like, oh man, I'm a close contact, I have to test. Like, what if I'm a positive? But we do that anyway, I guess, if they're.
They don't have to test. They can wait out all ten days and not know.
Yeah, that's not any better for the mental health. That's worse.
I like the idea of what we're talking about. I'd like it a lot more if we threw the testing part out. And I would be extremely happy if we forgot about the quarantine of healthy kids entirely. We just talked before in our earlier meeting, all kids can learn. How are they gonna learn when they're at home? They can't. So we might as well throw our mission statement out. We're talking on both sides of our mouth. Either do one or the other.
So do you feel better that we're offering a sooner return?
It's a step in the right direction. I don't think, I don't think it's a right, not far enough step, but it's a step in the right direction.
It's the best step we've had so far.
You know, I, I, I would prefer stepping up to six or seven days, forget about the testing. Be better yet if you went to no quarantine for, for healthy kids.
Cara, Carrie?
You guys hear me at all?
Yeah.
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 I just, just I went through it personally here and yes, so we talked to the nurse as far as testing on day ten or six or whatever. Yes, they said, you know, if a kid did have it, they will stay in their system for ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And then you would start your quarantine for your whole family all over again. Then you'd be all twenty-four days or twenty-five days or something, which I don't know will be a great idea.
So what we're looking at right now, we have to approve is um, the only changes we're looking to make is under student and staff quarantine. We would add back in vaccinated staff and students without symptoms that are close contacts would not have to quarantine if they choose to share vaccine status. And we are also adding in that after fifth day of quarantine of a close contact, you can choose to take a test if you are symptom free. If you are negative, you can return to school. So that is the motion we have on the table right now. Um, so we would need to vote on that.
So oh five, zero five to quarantine. Day six, they can test. All right. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Test and return. Yep. And then if they choose not to test, they go through day ten, return on day eleven. Um, we're not adding this. This isn't an add, right?
It was.
Okay, so we are also adding if twenty percent of the total staff and student population is quarantined. Instruction to switch to virtual home base learning until percentage quarantine fails below twenty percent, staff will report. Is that a public health, can they shut us down at twenty percent?
That's what was last year.
Okay. Okay. All right. So the motion on the table is for those approving.
Question though.
What's that? What did he say?
Question, okay, so if you just give, what if these, the, is the health department gonna go along with this or the health department sends up only, who do you listen to now? Who do these students listen to? The school's new thing or the health department?
Well, this is part of the health department's guidelines. We didn't um, adapt this last time, so we're updating it to be consistent with the health department and the CDC.
No, I'm just saying, okay, if you have a positive case in your family, you get a letter from the health department and they tell you what to do. It's not the same as what you're talking about here. So who do you listen to? The school or the health?
No, because you're talking about a positive case. We're talking about close contacts who are sane, who have no symptoms.
I understand that. The close contacts are fourteen days to the health department.
He's, he's right. The health department has not adapted anything different than fourteen days of the quarantine.
So they are.
How can we add this?
But here we are.
We can, because we have.
We don't want our fate.
Because we have, there's other area, county schools, other county schools that are.
So we're, we're adopting this.
Stanley Boyd and Thor both have.
So we're adopting this on our own.
Yes.
Is this a CDC recommendation? I'm just asking for, is there anything with the CDC for this?
The health department, the, the health department's recommendations are fourteen days across the board. There is no, they said that that's the gold standard and they will not back away from it.
Okay. So I would say to answer your question, Davy, is that if we're adopting this completely on our own. We are also going to have to instruct on all quarantine for our students. We couldn't just do it for this. We would have to, where we have the duration of quarantine period will be issued by the county health department, we need to take that out. So what do you say to that, Davy?
Well, I'm just saying if somebody doesn't go get tested or whatever, the, the doctor's gonna ask them who their close contact, or the health department's gonna ask who their close contact is, correct?
Yeah.
They get the.
Okay.
They don't get tested at the health department.
County gets, the health department from the county gets a list from us, all right? And that's who we check and that's who we give it. I, they could ask them, you know, but I think they take our test, our, our list first.
Okay, so they get your list, so if they take your list and then they send them parents something that says there's fourteen days, how, how are you gonna go, it doesn't even make, how are you gonna? You know, if you, if you're giving that, them names to that health department, how are you gonna not, you know, they, they send a letter to them people or call them people, say you're quarantining for fourteen days, how does this even work?
So then we would have to reach.
We need to talk to county and tell them, there's, there's three other schools that are doing it in our county.
So is the health department abiding by, like, when they talk to those schools, do they give them that, say, well, for your school, you can go back?
Four, maybe. It came up the other day in our, our uh, health meeting. They don't, they don't recommend it.
Okay.
Um, they are, they are looking at their quarantine, all righty, but the county has, so.
So we'd have to make sure we're making a point to those close contacts to let them know what our option is.
Yes.
So basically, if you go to a different school and you get your school's return date, the county is gonna give you a longer date, is what he is saying. And he's right on that. But we would allow them for, even though they're still in quarantine with the county, we would allow them back to school on our date. And we feel comfortable that they are symptom free and healthy enough to come back, even though the county is recommending that they still should be out for a while.
They're saying the fourteen days is the ideal situation, all right?
But we're saying we will accept them on day seven with a negative test, symptom free.
If they're healthy.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally agree with Kim on everything. I don't think we should be quarantining anybody. But now, I mean, we, I just talked off the lady, the phone with lady here a couple of days ago. If my kid would leave my house before day fourteen, she's subject to five or one hundred, a five hundred dollar fine per day. So how do you let him back in school?
That's issued by the health department.
The health department.
The health department.
Mm-hmm.
They would, they would deal with this.
So who issues the fine?
The county. The health department can issue a fine.
If they know.
So if they told us they're not gonna have a fine, our kids have come back early?
No, we're doing this, we'd be doing this against their wishes. So I guess if they find out someone's here, they can fine them.
They, they.
Right?
They don't have, they're not issuing fines. They don't have the time to do that. They have an issue with it if anybody.
Yes.
They're not gonna.
Well, I don't love just banking on the fact that they don't have time to do it and we put people at risk.
They're rich.
Okay, but we're letting families too.
That's true.
Stay out for fourteen, stay out for fourteen.
If you don't want to risk the fine, I guess that's a parent's choice. So really, our ten day is not, is, that's the same thing. They could still get fined.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, yeah.
Or six day or seven day.
Right.
Zero days.
I'm not pushing quarantine.
What's that?
I said, I'm not pushing to keep the fourteen day quarantine. I'm just saying what the facts are out there. No, I don't think there should be any quarantine or very, very short one if there is. Shorter than ten days or shorter than six days.
How many people are doing this? How many local schools?
Two, three.
Stanley, Thor.
Granton.
Granton, Owen, Spencer.
Owen.
Spencer. Day because students are doing it. Our schools are doing it.
Okay, so then are we taking off duration of quarantine period will be issued by the county health department?
I think you also have to.
You have to.
Because you're, because then otherwise you gets mixed messages.
Are we amending?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have to. We'll, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have to clean everything up and then amend. Well, no, we just have a motion to revise. So we're still in that discussion. We haven't approved yet. Okay. If we can.
Are we adding anything about antibody testing or school testing? We talked about that.
I think, I think, I think we need to look into it.
Yeah.
All right.
Your kid got a hand about that.
I think that's definitely something we can look into.
Can we just take this month at a time? I mean, I don't think we can load everything tonight.
Yep.
No.
No, I'm.
Okay, okay.
Let's just, month at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we can read this.
Didn't write that down. Just antibody test. Check into it, please.
Okay, so let's run through this again. Our motion is to um, approve our revised school operational plan. Which consists of, under daily operational plan, if twenty percent of students and staff population is quarantined. We will switch to virtual until that falls below twenty percent, staff will still report. We are also updating that student work areas will be spaced out within the classroom best as possible. Under student and staff quarantines, we are removing the second sentence of duration of quarantine period will be issued by the county health department. We are still releasing names of close contacts to the health department. We are adding back in that vaccinated staff and students without symptoms and are close contacts do not have to quarantine if they choose to disclose vaccination. We are adding in our shortened quarantine option, a close contacts will quarantine days zero to five. Day six, they test, return with a negative test result and symptom free for twenty-four hours. There is no test necessary. If they continue their quarantine through days six through ten, they may return on day eleven, symptom free. Is that what everyone understands our motion to be?
Yes.
All those in favor.
Hold on a second. Did you put symptom free for twenty-four hours? Is that on there?
Symptom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
All those in favor of our revised policy, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
Nay. So one, two, three.
Or, or three, three.
Three, three. I vote to approve the revised operational plan. So motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to discuss and approve Clark, Clark County influenza. Discuss and approve Clark County immunization flu clinic agreement.
Um, Clark County Health wants to come in like they have done every other year and do a flu shot for our students and staff. Uh, we've done it in here last year and this is where we recommend doing it again. Um, they also offer at four o'clock that they do it for the community. Where they would either do it in the vestibule right here or just right outside. Last year it was raining, so they did it right in the vestibule.
And requested the vestibule again.
Okay. All right. So then use, use the vestibule and I thought everything worked out fine last year. So all we're looking for is an approval for them to come and do that.
And just to be clear, this is for influenza vaccination only.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If we could have a motion to approve the flu clinic agreement.
Yes, Wolf.
Carolyn?
One second.
Tom? Any questions, concerns? Erin, anything to add to that? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Discuss and approve field trips, World Dairy Expo. If you want to take them one at a time or just want to kind of break them down?
If you throw them out and I'll.
Okay, World Dairy Expo?
Oh, all right.
I guess we're gonna do one at a time, so.
Um, World Dairy Expo, um, Mrs. Donovan Bauer wants to take a bus of twenty-four or twenty-five, one per seat. Um, World Dairy Expo, which is in Dane County, which will be masked on the bus and in Dane County. So where they go. So, um. Is that one?
No.
National FFA Convention is in out of state overnight. Um, wants to take the, Mrs. Donovan Bauer wants to take the FFA officers to this, which is, I do believe, eight students. I think that's a good, I think both of them are very good. And also our FCC LA, um, Mrs. Odean would like to take, um, I do believe, five or six students to Alma Center for a, I don't know if it's a competition. But it's an FS, FCC LA, um, event. So.
I think, I think it is several schools, just being there, it's gonna be a virtual meeting, but they're gonna have, you know, they're gonna have a little bit of interaction with other chapters.
Okay.
All right, if we could please have a motion to approve those field trips, please? I'll make that motion.
Can you approve those field trips?
Uh. Uh, okay, so, uh, Kim made that, and Carrie second, all those in favor say aye.
My second.
Aye.
I'm sorry, any discussion, question, concerns? Anyone opposed? Okay, have a good time. Uh, next, approve our twenty-one, twenty-two preliminary budget.
Okay, here is our expenses. What do you got?
I can share one with you. Carrie, do you have one there?
Yeah, I think you have that.
Yeah, but can you?
Yep. Oh, okay.
I have that one back here.
Okay. Alright, our twenty-one, twenty-two preliminary budget, you can see as you go through here, um, we are at, um, nine million, one hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred, basically, um, this is much higher than last year's, for the reason, um, we get eight hundred and seventy-two, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, hundred thousand dollars for our ESSR money. Um, last year our, our budget was eight point one million, so you go through, we got everything for the most part. What we need, our actual numbers do not come out until, you have your third Friday count, equalization aid, and, um, property tax, they will not come out till October fifteenth. This has given you a good overlay of what it looks like preliminary, where we're at. I do believe our enrollment has increased from last year. We will have final numbers here, Friday is third count, so this Friday, so we'll have more solid numbers down the road, but I think everything looks good. With that ESSR money, uh, there are certain areas where you can spend that, uh, we talked a little bit in facilities with some air handlers, uh, taking the, um, siding that is down on the elementary where it's not brick, and replacing that, because the R val, uh, that way, R value is not real great, that would be used because of ventilation. Things that we did in, uh, face room ventilation-wise can be used underneath that. So we are looking at other, other items like that. Twenty percent of this needs to be spent, on catching students up, filling the gap, alright, so we're doing a number of different things with that. We bought some intervention materials for that also, so we are continuing to work on, um, reaching that gap with our students, so. Any questions?
All right, if we could have a motion to approve the preliminary budget?
So move.
Harlan?
One second.
Kara? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, budget's approved. Discuss and approve community survey. So, yeah, we have our facilities survey, um, some people might already be seeing these.
Our postcard that went out, just talking about advertising our community survey, that you will be getting, this will be coming out the week of October sixth, um, encouraging everyone to make sure that they fill it out, we need your feedback on what your thoughts are of what we're proposing. It's a conceptual, uh, plan, so preliminary, so we are looking at things that we can need to change, or take off, or add, so.
See the postcards, what I'm ordering?
I think they were just starting to go out.
Oh, I see, 'cause I never got one.
Okay. Just starting, I think, maybe at the beginning of the week, maybe Tuesday. So, in our, um, facilities meeting, we went over this.
Our survey?
Our survey, there are two changes that we will need updated before it does go out, that we can, um, we can approve that with, with the changes that are needed.
Our-
Where was the other one?
This is the language and future project, as you're, you're highlighting now, and one is moving, because the morning that day, the last day.
Oh, you're right, exactly, yep, yep, got it right here, okay, thank you.
All right, if we could have a motion to, um, approve our community survey?
I'll make that motion.
Carrie, is there a second? Kim, uh, any further questions, concerns, discussion?
Probably just make mention that, that when people receive the survey, they can either, you know, complete the survey, the paper survey, they can go online and complete it. So there's two different methods to.
Yep.
And we'll also be holding a community, um, informational meeting on the sixteenth, from six to seven in the gym, if anybody wants to come in with their surveys, ask questions, um, we can help work through those with you.
October sixteenth, six to seven, high school gym.
All right, all those in favor of approving the community ser-
Sorry, so this will come out on the sixth, it is due back on October twenty-fifth. Results will be in November, and then we will go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. All those, um, in favor of approving the community survey, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, uh, next we will discuss and approve removal of tennis courts.
So, um, there has been many discussions over the last ten years on removing the tennis courts of where they're at. Uh, they've been repaired, uh, but they're cracked, and they're just time to be done. I do believe it, it is a liability, a liability for us, um, it, it, appearance-wise does not look good. I asked our fire department, and I asked, uh, Dan, Mr. Lindgren, um, I think the big thing is that, um, that there is a plan for them once removed down the road, so, and I would agree, um, just not to go back where they're at right now, unless we dig that all up and redo it. So, 'cause they have been fixed, repaired, I should say, repaired a couple of times, and it has come right back. So, and what the problem is, is there's huge cracks throughout the whole thing, so. My, my recommendation is to remove them, the fencing, the lighting, um, you have two, two estimates here, one from, um, Frobe Construction, and one from Lidner Excavating.
Is Lidner's price still gonna be good, seeing as how the estimate was given way back the first of March?
Yes, 'cause it did, it did change.
Okay, and then, uh, Frobe's-
Well, let's, um, let's get a motion so we can discuss further, okay?
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, um, go ahead, Harlan.
And then on Frobe's estimate, do those add, uh, numbers have to be all added together? He has no total on there.
Well-
I think it's the total, the way it is, it, just for the fence, it would be.
I would say they all add together, eighty-three hundred.
I would say they add together, yeah.
They would add together, yeah.
That's the way I take it.
So it'd come to eighty-three hundred.
But I did notice on Lidner's, removal of existing light poles are not included.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, who's taking the lighting down?
But right, one of it says dismantle and remove fence and poles, or is that-
The poles are the fence, yeah.
Fence poles.
For the fence, okay, I'll get that.
I also have a question of remove and dispose, so the first one is remove and dispose, and the next one says dismantle and remove, so is that also dispose? I don't know.
I would say-
I just wanna make sure considering like-
So, so the-
I don't know.
With a chain-linked fence, um, that would be something that if we wanted to go with Frobe, they would dispose of it, but in talking with Dan, he thought maybe we could even sell it outright.
I think, I think both of them items, even the tennis nets and poles would be, you'd be able to get something out of them.
The next thing we have to decide is if you see on Lidner Excavating, um, part of that is to supply, um, supply and apply grass seed to distributed areas, or do we want this to be additional parking, do we want gravel brought in? Well, if we will now, if we look at Frobe's, you know, we're at eighty-three hundred dollars, there's no grass, there's no gravel. If we go with Lidner at twenty-six hundred, he can do all of this, plus we could have addition, additional parking. So we have to decide what we want done with that area as well, if we want parking gravel or grass seed.
So you could always decide on that, once-
Later.
No.
No, 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 what I mean, what I mean is, what I mean is, you could get it removed, you're gonna be in winter, you know what I mean? Or you can go with a decision on what we wanna do with it.
Thank you.
And as far as remove the light poles, you're gonna have to have a electrician, unhooked electricity first anyway.
But still, we're gonna have a lot more money to play with here.
Well, exactly.
So, um, does anybody right now have a feeling whether we'd like to, you know, depend on the timing, and like Mr. Lidner pointed out, um, you know, if we'd even be able to do grass or gravel at this time, do we wanna, um, vote on a direction of what we want done with that area? Grass or gravel?
I don't know.
I think just hold it off.
I think you just hold off.
Get it out.
Just get it out?
Get it out, and let's, then let's evaluate what-
Uh-huh.
There's a reason why things are the way they are on that tennis court, so let's evaluate what it is, and maybe grass is the best solution, so.
I don't know, I just think any additional parking is always a great idea, especially in that area, so, but that's-
We can move a little bit.
Well, the only thing is, I'm thinking if you had to park a lot, I'm almost thinking you're gonna need brick or stuff underneath it to support the range, and you're gonna run into a lot more money than that, but-
Right, right.
Also, I, why don't you wait to see what's under there?
I think so.
Okay. Davy, are you, um, good with going to list Lidner Excavating for twenty-six hundred dollars versus eighty-three hundred dollars with Frobe? To remove the tennis courts, and we will wait on grass or gravel? What's that?
Sounds good.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you.
Sounds good!
All those in fav- okay, so, um, all those in favor of tennis court removal by Lidner Excavating, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Discuss and approve CTE Carl Perkins extra duty pay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Schiller runs our CTE, um, Carl Perkins, uh, which we get, um, this past year we had, I do believe fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars in grants that are awarded to us. He is looking at having some extra duty pay, um, so for last year, we just got a check for a CTE for, um, seventy-five hundred to eight thousand dollars for equipment used in our face room, um, tech ed area, ag area. So I, I think it's worth it, so what I would recommend is that we, um, pay him a thousand dollars from last year, and then a fifteen hundred dollars for this year, and he keeps track of what, exactly where his hours are at, what he's dealing with, this CTE and Carl Perkins grants. And then come back to us and see what's where we're at.
All right, if we could please have a motion to approve the Carl Perkins extra duty pay? I'll make that motion. Carrie?
One second.
Harlan, any further discussion, concerns?
So just to confirm, these are hours outside of his normal forty or whatever?
Yes. Yep. Not including days he's here, that he goes to see, so that's all excluded.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, next, discuss and approve support staff raise.
Okay, support staff have, um, from the recruit and retain, um, have had a recommendation, and, uh, has been done consistently throughout the years up until last year. Every five years, so initially they get a one and a half percent raise per year, with the catcher is that, a three percent raise after every fifth year, alright, so the last two years they've got above a fi- a three percent raise, and we haven't, haven't added that three percent for every fifth year, person. So, as our support staff, I am going to, um, recommend that we continue with, um, the three percent raise after every fifth year, um, for our support staff. Uh, it does amount to about eight or ten employees, uh, from the last two years, but I think it's worth it for a retained, retained-
That we need to back pay, 'cause they didn't, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
So they would get the three percent every five years, and then they, they got their, their yearly stipend as well?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so if we could please have a motion to approve our support staff raise?
I'll make that motion.
Kara?
One second.
Tom, any further questions? Okay, motion carries. Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I caught myself that time. Alright, next we are going to, um, uh, discuss hiring a four K assistant full-time.
Um, so we have applications out, and Mrs. Pop and Mrs. Deekman are doing interviews right now. Do not have any names right now, but this is a position that will be, um, added or chosen real, real soon, so-
Next week.
Next week, I would give you permission to have me hire that person, uh, up until next meeting, and then we can approve him at that time.
Alright, so what we would need is a motion to give Mr. Lidner approval to hire a four K assistant full-time. Um, I do want to add to that, that the board would be notified of the recipient before it is, the offer's extended, um. That would be the motion. If I could have a motion. Harlan?
One second.
Carrie, any questions, concerns? Okay, alright, uh, so, Mr. Lidner, that- Is up to you.
Yep, yep, we're gonna vote, just a moment.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Apparently I'm just overvoting, but that motion carries. And we are going to move into our principal's report, Mrs. Pop.
So, the open house was a complete success for us this year. In the elementary, we had two hundred students that came along with their parents for that first initial meeting, it was great. Orientation day also went well, we had a hundred and eighty-five students present that day, and that is a little bit lower than the open house simply, but four K did not run classes on orientation day. Um, United Way plans to again have the NOW, which is nutrition on weekends program, um, in this school here. Um, that means if they, they bring, uh, meals in for families that might not have access to anything that they need for the weekend, and they plan to mend those up again on Fridays to the students, they could use that extra help. Right now we have eleven students that benefit from that program, and we hope to add some more soon, but we do have to receive consent from the parents before we can put the kids into that program. Fifty-day family entry is on the first day of school, September first, and retake day will be rescheduled for both ends of the building. The third, fourth, and fifth graders had their lap sale kickoff on Thursday, September second, and all orders will be delivered on April thirteenth. Uh, Thursday, September thirtieth, the fifth graders will be going to the High Grown's Memorial for a field trip. Um, fifth grade, K five teachers are assessing, uh, this last couple of weeks, our math and reading levels of all of our students, using the new FastBridge system that you guys paid for, so thank you, we appreciate it, it's a interesting system, and we're getting lots of debt out of that, so.
So, just not to interrupt you, but that is one of the items that we will use with that twenty percent- So, just not to interrupt you, but that is one of the items that we will use with that twenty percent on our S R money, so.
And just FYI, we're also saving money using this system compared to the system we're using. Like, five thousand dollars for this compared to about fifteen thousand for the system that we're using, and this one offers. Title one, and we have our high potential groups, which is where we're having, Mrs. Brad, I think, came back to work with our kiddos. Maybe we call it sort of our gifted and talented, but we chose to, we want to look at high potential. Those groups are gonna be starting soon, working with kiddos, and we held, I held today, it was kind of fun, the first team meetings that I've been have, able to have using our system now, so I have a group, the K two teachers, I could meet with them all together at one time, and the three five teachers, we could meet with all together with them at one time. And it was setting some goals and establishing some norms of our group and what we're gonna be looking at with our kids. So we're really looking forward to, well, that's gonna help us to make some stronger changes for our program.
Thank you, Mrs. Pop.
All right, so at the middle school and high school, as, as Mrs. Pop was saying, we kicked off the year with our in-services and our open house and our orientation, so on open house day, we had a pretty consistent flow of families coming in. Pretty relaxed, in a sense that they were able to kind of work around the school, visit with teachers, see teachers in their classrooms, get the students in, check in their lockers and stuff like that, so it was great to see. We had some tours that were going on that day too as well by Mr. Lidner, so I thought that worked out really well. Our orientation day was very well attended, we had everyone but fourteen students not in attendance, so from six twelve. Very good participation. So, and a lot of things, that was a crazy day for us, I think, across the whole building. So, we got some good feedback from the staff on, on maybe some things that we can look at doing differently. But at the end of the day, it was crazy, but a lot of the feedback we got, it was, it was a good crazy. So I think that's, that's important to hear, that we had a plan, and maybe it got a little too crazy, but in all in all, we kind of accomplished what was meant to. A lot of interruptions, but in a sense, we knew that, and we kind of programmed for that, and we had some opportunities at the middle and high school to get students with teachers, and just do some talking and socializing and kind of ease into the start of the school year, so I thought that was a huge success for us. And it really gave us an opportunity to build some relationships. It's neat to see when you got staff sitting at tables with a bunch of students around, and they're just talking about, hey, what'd you do over the summer, how's it going, what, what do we got going, what do we got planned for you here at school, so I thought that was very good as well. All of our fall sport, sport programs, middle school and high school are well into their seasons right now, as they're doing some great things as well too. What's coming up next is currently we are doing FastBridge screening, so that's what Mrs. Pop talked about with our math and our reading. We are doing that from grade six through ten. We plan to finish up next week with any makeups and some of our high school students as well. We are, we will start implementing our new GET intervention schedule, so we have GET built into our day for six twelve. That happens for about thirty minutes, and that's scheduled with the targeting students during that time with certain teachers. So, if I'm a student that's not doing well in my math class, I'm gonna be going to my math teacher during that time and figuring out why things aren't going as well as they need to be going, so we have a kind of a mechanism to do that and track that, and so it'll be new, it'll be a little different. So we'll get some feedback, and we might tweak things on the way, but ultimately what we're targeting there is getting students what they need with people that can do the learn, do the teaching and instructing the best during that time. We have homecoming next week, so that's always a busy week. We are targeting Friday for housing most of the chaos at the high school and middle school level for that day. We will not have regular classes on that day, so we will have a mixture of activities and events going on. We'll have a parade in the afternoon before the end of school, and volleyball has a home match Thursday, and football will have their home game Friday. And then I believe volleyball's on the road at a tournament on Saturday, and then our dance will be Saturday evening in the elementary gym for homecoming. We are actually playing Lady Smith this year, who will be coming here, they are the Lumberjacks. We, staff will begin their Wednesday morning collabor- collaboration time with me, so they're gonna be going through some training as I help kind of set the stage for building our teams, and kind of getting deeper into what collaborative learning is for, for our staff, and what that means for our students. So we will kick that off on Wednesday morning, starting in the first week of October. And that'll be collectively, all six twelve teachers will be with me prior to the start of school on Wednesdays. We talked about World Dairy Expo, so we're excited about getting some kids down there to take, to take that in. And we are very much excited to get our face room complete, as Mrs. Odean is as well. There was, there is cooking going on, so we have the availability to use ovens and use ranges, and I, I believe we were cooking a few burgers in there the other day, so kids are doing things, they're baking. She's really doing a great job, but we, we can't wait, and she's chomping at the bit just to have it done. So, it looks like there's a light at the end of the tunnel here, we're shooting for, you know, it might be another month of working back and forth. We have her working out of another room, kind of using both facilities, so it's working, but we know that there's better things to come with that, and we are really excited to kind of advertise and show that place off when it's all done, because it, it's gonna be special. Our midterm grading window will come up soon here, as our six-week mark, we will approach here in the, within the middle of August. And so that'll be popping along with that, we will have our staff in-service then on October fifteenth, so students will be on site. And that'll give us our first full-day PD session with the staff, will be focused on CPI training. So that's working on some crisis situations, we'll have some staff doing all the training, and then all the staff will do a kind of a intro to it and a basic training, and then we'll dive more into it with a select group of staff on the holds, restraints, safe procedures when it, when it has to deal with, dealing with students in a, in a crisis situation. And that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Deekman. All right, Mr. Lidner.
Couple things. Mr. Deekman, you might want to help me out if you can. We have a young man, Brandon Jacoby, won the state driving, tractor driving contest or certification contest. Yep. But he is being interviewed by the National FFA. Do you, do you know, I don't know times and dates.
He is one of the four students in the nation in his proficiency award here, in proficiency area. So he won the state competition, now he's, he was selected as one of the four finalists in that area, so then the interviews, I think they're gonna go virtual this year, will determine whether he, you know, is selected as the overall award winner in the nation, or is, I, I don't recall it exactly.
I don't think it's just tractor driving, I think it's a whole lot to do with tractor rebuilding and things like that.
Agriculture.
SAR program or something?
What was it?
Like an SAR program or something.
Yeah, I want to say like agricultural.
It's something to do with his baling operation.
Yes, entrepreneurship.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah. It is next Tuesday that his virtual interview is, so we'll be hosting it here for him in the conference room, and it starts at nine forty is when he has his national interview for that.
We should really showcase that.
Thank you.
Then he'll find the results out Thursday at the national convention.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody will know nothing till Thursday morning.
Okay, awesome.
Chance, good chance.
Thank you for your information. We wish him good luck, and our hats off to him, congratulations to where he's at right now. I just want to piggyback off of Mrs. Pop and Mr. Deekman. I thought we had a really good in-service with our teachers. It was more, try to build in that relationship building throughout. I thought our open house was very well attended, and like Mr. Deekman said, I, I did three tours. One, I had a good amount there, and we just kind of went through and showcased what we have done in the last couple of years, couple of summers. And I, I thought it was a good, I, I hit. Orientation day was, I thought was excellent. Like they said, might have been a little too busy. But I think for the first time, I think it was, I think all, everything went very well. We do have a, I did have a survey out that the administration made up to our staff, just on how were those, the in-service days, how was in, open house and orientation, got some very valuable feedback from everyone. And a lot of positives. Facilities-wise, we are just, like Mr. Deekman said, we're finishing up that face room, and everything else is, for the most part, intact. And just kind of cleaning up some things on the outside yet, but otherwise, other than that, everything's going well. Very excited about the year. I would like to thank our students, parents, staff, and administration on a great start to our, our school year. Very excited with the changes, and just, I think it's a very, has a very good positive buzz in our school right now. As I walk from the high school through the middle school down to the elementary, a lot of great things happening, so thank you, everyone.
Do you want to, do you want to mention about Mrs. Zarkey being recognized?
Yeah.
I just saw that on, on the site that she was recognized as the
Financial.
Financial literacy teacher.
Recognition award.
Yeah, financial literacy organization, so.
Well, congratulations to her. I did not see that, so.
I just saw it today, yeah.
Okay. So, we're, yeah, we're busy working on, on operational plan reopen, or opening, so. So congratulations to Mrs. Zarkey on that awesome achievement.
I believe we have our meeting date set for October, October sixteenth, correct? We are meeting at six to-
Twentieth, I have.
Twentieth.
I'm sorry, is the twentieth a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yep.
I just randomly picked days, don't worry. So on Oc- That's by the way. So, October twentieth, we're gonna meet at six P M., and we're gonna have a community forum for our facilities. Seven P M. closed session, eight P M. open. So then our annual meeting is the following Monday. And that's at seven thirty, is that right?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, yeah, seven thirty in the gym. And then we are going to work on having a meeting with that leadership team about strategic planning within the next month of bets to come.
We're gonna need to plan the special board meeting after the annual meeting to set the levy.
No. Okay. Do you want to set that right now?
It'll just be immediately following, so, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, just go ahead and put that on there.
We have to have that all done by November sixth.
Perfect. Okay. Do we have any other business? Okay, if I could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any other public comments.
Well, this would be an after the fact thing, you said two different dates, we're doing the
I know, that's why they just-
When I asked you, you said the sixteenth.
It's the twenty, it's the twenty-first, we'll correct that.
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Twentieth, oh my gosh.
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Yeah, that special meeting will be like three minutes, all you gotta do is set the levy on that one.